One minute.
Clear is good.
Stand by. All right, stand by, here we go, in ten, nine, eight, seven, six, five, four, three, two, go.
Good evening and welcome to the Monday, October nineteenth, two thousand and fifteen, Long Meadow Select Board Meeting. We'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll start with announcements, any board members, or Stephen have any announcements?
Uh, none, just a town meeting, the, sorry, the special town meeting is Tuesday, November third at seven P. M. in the auditorium, which is a new location for town meetings, so just a reminder for folks, show up and have your voices heard.
Anybody else? Alex?
The Long Meadow Cross Country Mile took place this past Saturday on October seventeenth. The first among males was Brendan Mulderig. First among females was Julia Cummings, Ada Grant won the Black Ribbon Challenge. And our next race will be November fourteenth, nine A. M. at the Wolf Swamp Fields.
Mark, you know, I'd like to recognize and commend a couple of our police officers, Carl Mazafari and Pete Chip McAlany, for, uh, for their apprehension of suspect and in a couple of recent car break-ins on October fourteenth. I think it's a great testimony to the hard work of our police department, I think they ought to be recognized.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Tom, you have anything for the general will talk? Okay. Resident comments?
Good evening, my name is Jess Hutchins and my address is one twenty-eight Hilltop Road in Long Meadow, obviously. I think some of you are aware that I circulated a petition and I did send it along to Richard as the chair of the select board. I believe he shared it with town manager. And I'm hoping that all of you either have a copy of that tonight, or it will be provided with a copy. I did bring an extra copy, if you'd like one, I'm happy to leave it. Would you, sure, absolutely.
Yeah, we haven't got.
Oh, sure. So, as I mentioned, the petition contains a hundred and eight signatures. And it reads, it's requesting a crossing guard specifically, just around the corner from Blueberry Hill School. And it reads, "We, the parents and neighbors of Blueberry Hill School, ask that the town of Long Meadow, Ohio, a school crossing guard at the intersection of Blueberry Hill Road, Lawrence Drive, and Tanglewood Drive. We don't want an accident to be the reason for this critical action to be taken." And I think you all are familiar with the corner that I'm speaking of, there's a four-stop signs, it's a four-way intersection. It's a pretty intense little intersection, and it's just around, it's just right outside of the school. And I have seen that you've sent up police officers out to do some observation, which I'm grateful for. And I hope that they were able to observe some mornings, I saw them primarily in the afternoons. And unfortunately, also, they left a little bit early because there are a lot of middle school kids that come through that intersection as well, and after-school program kids who come through after the police officer had already left. Also, something that you couldn't glean, being in a police car certainly, is that there are many, many people who drive through those stop signs and many rolling stops. It's an extremely busy intersection with the actual number of kids likely lower, I'm guessing statistically, than some of the other crossing areas, partially because, one of the reasons being that many parents park along the street and go to walk their kids, or just walk from home to walk their kids and cross. Me being one of those parents, because I don't feel comfortable having my fifth grader and my kindergarten student walk through that intersection alone. The traffic flow is also very intense and it's within a very small radius. And one of the things that parents observe and the reason that we all sign this petition is there's a constant interaction between the children and the drivers of, can I go, are you going to stop? And it's four directions, and for elementary school children to be looking in four directions, making eye contact with drivers, making sure they stop, is really something that's so intense to observe and something that you can't sort of just see from observing and understand from statistics. But it's just, it's very dangerous, and, you know, in the end, I just, I said in one of my emails to Richard that really no data or statistics can replace the parent's intuition about this corner, which is a great level of concern that we've had for many, many years. And unfortunately, a lot of policy is made after things happen. And I hope that this isn't one of them, I hope we can be proactive on this issue and responsive and really trust the concerns of the constituents here. Trust our parents' instincts, get a crossing guard out there, and just make sure that we're ensuring the future safety of our young schoolchildren, the elementary schools, so I thank you kindly for your time.
Okay, thank you, Jess.
Thank you.
Now, Stephen, you're, I guess you can update the board right now on what you've done.
Yeah, yes, Richard, um, we did, we have sent in one of our officers in the unmarked vehicle out to kind of monitor the intersection, and really it's, I'm sure people are on better behavior with regards to stop signs when they see a vehicle, a police vehicle, or even an unmarked one. But really, to account children, parents, cyclists, which directions are coming from, you know, it's, we have a way that we analyze intersections when we look at as a part of our crossing guard program. So, we've been in the process of doing that, I mean, I, certainly, a parent's intuition is important, but we also need to balance some level of data and analysis because it, the intersection, you know, the budget for the program is fixed for the year. And so, if we're going to add, expand the crossing guard program, we need to give ourselves the options of either taking a guard from an intersection that is not as intense as this one, which I think the feedback I've gotten so far is that it is, it is pretty intense and there's a lot going on, especially with the parents parking and things like that. But we are taking it very seriously and we will, like I said, do some more monitoring this week and then decide what the right course of action is in comparison to some of our other crossings. And if we need to come back for, either budget, you know, either come back at the end of the fiscal year for a budget amendment, or perhaps talk to the finance committee to cover an additional guard or something like that, we can certainly do that if that's needed.
But this is standard procedure, when you activate the traffic safety committee.
Yep, we do, we have standard protocol, we do, to measure these things out.
So, Stephen, so, as far as now, children who come to that intersection, are they supposed to stay to one side of the street, are they supposed to walk up Blueberry all the way to, like, Bless and Cross, or is there a crossing in front of the school?
I don't know, there, are sidewalks on both sides, I don't think there's.
No, there aren't, no.
Typically, there's sidewalks on one side and we channel the traffic along where the sidewalks are.
To that one side, okay, it's, all right, okay, because, I mean, that's the other thing, is you want kids to cross the street as little as possible.
Yeah, and it's, it's, what's happening is, for example, my kids are crossing two ways. A lot of kids are crossing two streets there, it's really tricky. And then, for my kids to get home, there's no sidewalk on the side that we live on because there's no sidewalk on that side of Blueberry Hill Road going all the way down until, I'm not sure where it, no, it doesn't pick up at all, actually. So, it's tricky, but.
Were you through?
Yeah, I'm done, yeah.
You know, I was, can we have something like this put in our packets going forward? Because I thought something like this, like correspondence, would be going into our packets. I had happened to hear about it on Facebook and I had encouraged people, you know, let's, no, just do it on, get it out of the internet and actually submit it formally, and I figured we'd be seeing it. And so, I was a little surprised when I didn't see it. You know, the other thing that I was going to comment on is, I think the crossing guard program is great. It's such a cheap way to get to kids to school safely. I mean, when you compare what it costs to get kids to school on school buses, this is like a pittance. And, you know, one possibility, Stephen, on funding this would be a reserve fund request. I mean, we're probably talking fifteen hundred dollars, maybe two thousand, right? Because I wouldn't want to.
I guess a little more now, but yeah.
Okay, I mean, it's pretty small. And, because I wouldn't want us to be sort of, you know, robbing Peter of pay Paul.
Right.
So.
I mean, I think that the, it's not just this year, if it was a one-time expenditure. And I don't mean to say that the money's not worth it. Like I said, I, even though it was a budget amendment that you offered, I had initially proposed enhancing the crossing guard program early on, and it is something we've worked hard to make better during my time here, and I think we've gotten good results. We worked with the school district to add a crossing guard at Converse Street and as a result of the redistricting process. You know, we didn't say, well, we don't have a crossing guard, so we, you can't send kids that way. We said, well, yeah, we need one there. You know, I think it's, it's more, there are some intersections that just either kids have aged out of that post or in the winter time, nobody's there, and so, it's really, we want to make sure that we're making the right decision to fund it this year, but also on an ongoing basis in future years, which you can't go to reserve fund every year. And, you know, we just want to balance all factors. I mean, I think we're, like I said, the feedback I've gotten says it's, it could be beneficial there. We just want to make sure that we're making the right decision now and in the future. Right, right way to finance it, not without the crossing guards justified.
Yeah, and I think that, if I may, is it for me to respond, I don't know how you conduct your visitors.
We're allowing it.
Okay, thank you. You know, I think the safety, just because it's, it's an issue of safety and it's an issue of safety with children, the funding is something that, you know, of course, is a concern, but, you know, if it was taken out of reserve for this year at least, and then we sort of reorganized and assessed, how is this going to come out of the budget going down the road? But at least to have a body there and to know that our children are safe with a crossing guard, you know, every day is, is like the commercial priceless, you know?
I hear what you're saying, I think if we went only with parents' intuition, there'd be crossing guards on every single corner. And we obviously couldn't afford that, that's why we have to evaluate intersections kind of independently. But it was, honestly, I'm glad you brought it to our attention.
Well, just for clarification, when I said parents' intuition, you know, obviously, we can't fund a crossing guard at every corner, parents' intuition regarding this particular intersection, so, yeah.
And I think the, our analysis is, is supporting intuition.
Yeah, well, that's great, that's great to hear, thank you, and I thank you for your time and your allowance of speaking.
You'll have that wrapped up in the week?
Yeah, I think we're just, like I said, doing some additional counts this week, and I would imagine we'll make a recommendation.
And that's when it would have been brought to the board, when he made his study.
Yeah, that, no, I, yeah.
Right, and I, I was aware of social media too, I figure everybody on the board had seen social media, I don't know who can avoid social media. Thompson.
My kids explain it to me, I don't.
Yeah, thank you, Jess.
Thank you.
Any other resident comments?
My name's Marjorie Morgan and I live at fifty-seven Woolworth Street. Actually, Betsy and I arrived at the same concerns, but sort of from a different route. I moved to Long Meadow in nineteen seventy-eight. And when I came here, the Long Meadow shops were just what they were shops. They were small, they were unique, and many owner-oriented and operated. Families could go to Friendly's to have affordable meals for their family and celebrations. Over the years, the character of the shops has eroded. Soon, there's going to be more parking spaces, a giant C. V. S., and the lure of a J. Crew, which may or may not ever appear. Hardly anybody over, under thirty refers to going to the shops. They say, "We're going up to the mall," which is soon just to be referred to as another strip mall. But, as you know, this is said and done, and I believe that people still don't realize what they've done by voting the increase of shopping up there. But, actually, we're more alarmed about something else that's happening in Long Meadow. Our beautiful, historic Long Meadow Street is just becoming Route Five. Just another busy street. We're slowly losing the charm and the historical importance of this street. Look how long the Young Estate has been falling down and people have been driving by it. There should be outrage about this, as much as there was outrage about the Blueberry School redistricting. The select board, the historical commission, and town residents really need to take action, not to let the Young House fall down, and most of all, let Long Meadow Street become an endangered district, soon lost to traffic, high taxes, and indifference. Thanks.
Thank you, thank you. Any other resident comments?
Yes.
Hi there. My name is Betsy Port and I'm also speaking about the Young Mansion, which is also known as the Absorbing Junior Mansion.
Could you, Betsy, could you give your address, please?
Yes, I live at two-one-two Farmington Road.
Thank you.
The Absorbing Junior Mansion, the Young Mansion, it's also the Brewer Young Mansion. I moved here about nineteen years ago, and I must say, I had never heard of this town. But when we first arrived, I was shocked and glad to see the beautiful town green and the beautiful Route Five and the historic district. I write for the Long Meadow News sometimes, and two weeks ago, I wrote about this situation of the Young Mansion falling apart. The Absorbing Junior Young Mansion is falling apart before our eyes, such decrepitude. Will the town leaders or Historic District Commission take action? Can they do anything? I believe that something must be done because so many residents really do care about this town and its history. The bank's inaction is irresponsible, reprehensible, and completely dysfunctional. I represent a number of concerned citizens, many of whom are on Facebook. We are upset and concerned that a local landmark built sometime in the eighteen eighties is falling apart. Someone with historic preservation clout needs to do something. Does the Historic District Committee have the power and the teeth to preserve and protect the Young Mansion? I'm simply asking for help. I recently attended a lecture at the Forbes Library in Northampton. It was called Lost Northampton. Will the Young Mansion be lost? And just for a quick history lesson, I own two books, one is called Lost New York and the other is called Lost Boston. And if we have one for Long Meadow, we can put the Young Mansion on the cover. Sometimes, things have to be lost for progress, for change, for development. On the cover of Lost New York is Penn Station. I never was in this Penn Station, this is the building that was taken down in the very early nineteen sixties, but it really started the preservation movement, full force. And a few years later, when they wanted to tear down Grand Central in Manhattan, this was sort of, you know, the sacrificial lamb. From then on, people really began to care and try to preserve history. So, I'm here as a concerned citizen, I don't know what can be done by this specific group, but if you have any people who you can bring in, any legal counsel, from what I understand, a bank owns it, and there may or may not be people living in the Young Mansion, but I just think it's very sad and depressing. Thank you.
Any other resident comments? Select Board comments? Alex?
Couple of things, one, just speaking on the same site, subject of, as the Young Mansion, you know, I have been hearing for several months, you know, this, there's been discussions with the town manager and the Historic District Commission, and the fact is, the Young Mansion has been altered in the Historic District without leave of the Historic District Commission. In other words, it's illegal, what they did, they placed supports on the columns. And we haven't really taken any action against the bank. I know that there's been discussions with the town manager and members of the committee about sort of a more conciliatory or passive approach to the bank to try to get them to come to some kind of resolution, but it seems to me that this kind of passive approach of not, you know, fining the bank for making these alterations in the Historic District as we would to anybody else, you know, doesn't serve the town well. And I don't think it's a, I don't think it's a good strategy for accomplishing what we all want to accomplish, which is to, you know, stop this disintegrating house being an eyesore. So, I would exhort the Historic District Commission on its own authority to take action. Now, one of the things I've noticed about the Historic District Commission is that, you know, they really do their job and they pay close attention. A few years ago, I weighed in as a private citizen in favor of the Long Meadow Montessori wanted to have an eight-foot dirt sidewalk turned into concrete so that the kids wouldn't get muddy walking into the, and the answer was no. You know, no, we need to preserve the character, we can't have any more concrete. And, and I think the people that come before the District Commission, who make their applications and follow the process, we tend to hold them, you know, that's a pretty rigorous process that they go through. But then you have a bank that ignores the process altogether, and we have this passive approach. I don't think that's the right way to go. With respect to Greenwood, we had some discussion last week about the nine-one-one center. I just want to make it clear that what divides us on this board is not the desire to look at a regional nine-one-one dispatch center, it's the use of Greenwood. I, I'm very concerned that there were three members of the select board that want to keep Greenwood on the table, that the town manager wants to keep it on the table, and that, I guess, as it stands now, it's going to be the town manager that decides whether Greenwood is used for this purpose. I think something like shutting that down and using that facility, losing that facility and having to spend millions of dollars to replace it is something that we should really be engaging the public with. We should be having a public hearing before we decide to put Greenwood on the table for this nine-one-one center. But as it is now, it's sort of, you know, left to this consortium, the planning committee, that nobody's ever going to really see. So, I, I cannot express my disapproval more than using Greenwood for the nine-one-one center. I think we need to keep it for its present purposes. If somebody does have a plan for using it as a nine-one-one center, then we also need a funding plan of how we're going to replace those functions, how that gym's going to be replaced, how the space that we use for your after-school.
You're jumping way ahead.
After-school.
Keep your discussion current, okay, please?
No, it is.
No, you're in hypothetical land now, you're way, way down the road, so let's keep it current. You disapprove, that's fine, we don't need the long litany on the history because the history may not be there. Let's just keep it current, please.
May I continue?
Yeah.
Thank you. So, I think we, if we're going to keep it on the table, part of keeping it on the table is having a plan so that all the programs that we really do use, you know, we're able to continue. Because I think there is zero support in the community for tearing down Greenwood for this nine-one-one.
You're spreading rumors that are unfounded, Alex, I'm sorry.
No, but you, you wanted to keep it on the table.
No, you, you're spreading rumors that are unfounded, and it's very unfair to take the microphone and spread this stuff to the community. There's been nothing decided on there, it's likely a year away before the discussion will even come back. It's disjointed, the only thing we're doing is moving forward with the study on the rec center, period.
Right.
And that's it.
And I wanted to take it off the table.
You can't take it off the table, you've been told by law that you can't take it off the table. The lawyer has issued an opinion, it's a violation of the charter. We all have to move forward in life, I says, let's move forward.
Well, I disagree, Richard.
Okay, disagree, you disagree with the legal opinion?
Yeah, I'm going to, town council and I are going to have further discussions about this, this week. But the point is, as a matter of policy, the question is whether we want to have Greenwood as a site. That's something that I think the, the public needs to be engaged in.
That decision will come back at the appropriate time, but now it's not the appropriate time. We're nowhere near that point. We haven't even done the study for the rec yet, leave alone, pick the location. And you've already been informed, there's what, two to three other communities have stepped up with sites that look like they're far superior to Greenwood, or Greenwood.
All right, then let's take it off the table.
Alex, it can't be taken off the table, it's on the jurisdiction of the town manager, you have a legal opinion as such, and it stands until it's overruled, okay? We have a charter, we must follow the charter. Tommy, I mean?
Well, yes, I, you know, I did get, well, I, of course, looked at the, the Long Meadow reminder and, and saw that, you know, Richard Foster was accused of doing something illegal, and so, I was a little shocked to see that, and so, we've got an opinion from our town council, David Martell. And it's, you know, I don't want to read the whole thing, but I think that it's only fair to read a couple of parts of it because folks who did watch the meeting that happened on October fifth were probably wondering exactly what was going on when Richard refused a motion that was forwarded by Mark and Alex that basically said they wanted to move ahead with the nine-one-one call center, but at the same time, to take Greenwood off, off the table. And so, one paragraph says, "As I read Mr. Gold's motion, it would have barred consideration of Greenwood as a site for Regional Nine-One-One Dispatch Center, as explained by Mr. Foster in his memorandum. Mr. Gold's motion would have been inconsistent with Section five dash two K of the Town Charter, which give the town manager full jurisdiction over the rental and use of all town facilities except schools." Two paragraphs down, "First, in my opinion of Section five-two K of the Town Charter is clear that the town manager has a decision-making authority over rental use of town buildings, which would include Greenwood Center. The impact of Mr. Gold's motion would take the authority away from the town manager since it would preclude the use of Greenwood Center as a dispatch center, a decision which would be the town manager's to make." Now, most meetings such as this, you know, refer to Robert's Rules of Order, and he addresses Robert's Rules of Order and states that the duties of the chair include a ruling, ruling a motion out of order. Among other motions that the chair may rule out of order are so-called dilatory and improper motions. The latter category includes motions that conflict with the corporate charter, constitution, or bylaws of a society, and furthermore, a town government. Furthermore, if any motion of this kind is adopted, it is null and void. It was therefore within Mr. Foster's discretion to rule Mr. Gold's motion out of order. And he, the town chair has the authority and duty to make necessary rulings. And based on his review of the tape of the October fifth meeting, and no appeal was taken at the time of Mr. Foster's ruling that Mr. Gold's motion was out of order, the board proceeded to vote on another motion. Therefore, this matter is to be resolved by reference to Robert's Rules of Order. Therefore, this matter is to be resolved by reference to Robert's Rules of Order and follows at Mr. Foster's ruling stance. As you know, that there was a second vote taken that was passed on a vote of four to one, and so, he considers this issue sort of like water under the dam, you know, or water under the bridge, you know? It goes on and shouldn't keep coming back to bother us. Our town manager took an appropriate stand in regards to his duties as defending the charter of the town, and I think, you know, he sort of has owed an apology for the grief he's been taking in the last couple of meetings and in the press. I hope that the Long Meadow Reminder will retract their statement. I was kind of worried I was going to see Richard in handcuffs, but I'm glad he's here. I'm glad he was following the charter. It's not an easy job to be a chair of the select board, and I appreciate his work, and it's a struggle. And we move forward or we move backwards, and we have some times we don't all agree, but, you know, we have to follow the charter, and so, Richard, I just wanted to mention that I appreciate you sticking with your plan because it was the right move.
Okay. Thank you, Tom. You have anything, Mark?
Nope.
Steven, you have anything?
For Tom Angelo's report?
No. Any comments?
I'll get to it, Tom Angelo.
Okay. Yeah, the last televised meeting did show the arguing of the board over this motion, and this, the legal opinion has now been shared. Tom read most legal opinion. That's not to say that we're going to involve and have Greenwood placed on the lease for a center. There's a long way down the road. There's a lot of sites that are going to come up. Alex's point is well-taken. The thing is, we control the purse strings, and that the final outcome is what we authorize as far as expenditures of dollars in our community. So, the board does have a lot of authority, and Mr. Crane is very much aware of what the charter says and very much aware of what our authority is, and he has talked openly about this issue. I have the fullest confidence that Mr. Crane is not going to do a renegade action against our community, because we do hold the upper hand on the budget, and we actually hold the upper hand, and we could dismiss his services over an issue. So, I think there's a lot of chit-chat on this issue. I think it's inappropriate. We're fear mongering as far as I'm concerned, because this is way down the road. We need to get way down the road before this discussion comes back. And at that point, every concern that Mr. Grant has, will we put on the table? And there will have to be satisfaction in that, or we would never move forward with anything. We're just not going to do it. This board is not going to, is not going to support the community in a fashion that would eliminate the needs of half the community for the half, for the other half. It's just not going to happen. So, I don't think I can add anything else, but move on. No other comments on any select board members? Town manager? Excuse me, I did have a couple of things, I'm sorry. We had the cancer awareness symposium this week. About eighty, or about seventy-eight or so people attended. I want to tell everybody that didn't get there, you missed a fantastic symposium. There was five doctors came in from Mercy Hospital and gave about an hour and a half presentation on cancer awareness, treatments, statistics, and had nice orders or food to have. It was a wonderful evening. One statistic that rings strong and true with me is they had, they talked about colon cancer. There's, I believe, there's fifty-one thousand seven hundred colon-related cancer deaths a year, and the doctor said fifty-one thousand of them are preventable. It is a shocking statistic on colon cancer. Fifty-one thousand are preventable. We also had the petition come in, I was going to mention, we had the petition come in from the young lady that's already addressed us, that town manager's working on, is getting the team up to see, and then we were going to come to the board with the conclusion of that study. And we've also heard from our consultant, I guess what, yesterday, Steven, or today? Today, heard from the consultant, Bernie?
We did, I was going to touch on that.
Yeah, Bernie's coming, oh, you're going to have your report? Okay. And there also is another thing, there's a piece of property in town on 53 South Street, or South Avenue, that will be auctioned off to public, public auction tomorrow night at 6:00 PM, I believe, in the community center. Anyone interested in viewing the property, I believe they're going to have a special viewing again tomorrow at 3:00, Paul?
2:00.
2:00, 2:00 PM. There'll be.
And you also need to call the treasurer's office.
Yeah, by appointment, 2:00 PM by appointment.
Okay, 2:00 PM by appointment, call the treasurer's office. If anyone is interested in bidding on this property, you'll have to have a bidder's package, and it's available from the treasurer's office. The auction, I believe, takes place tomorrow night at 6:00 PM in the community center. Okay, town manager's report.
Thanks, Richard. Excuse me, a couple of things that just were brought up here that I want to touch on. We did hear back from our facilitator, Bernie Lynch, and he was expressing interest in coming back to do perhaps some more team building and goal-setting, and wanted to get some feedback from us on the previous facilitation, and, you know, where we're going to go for next steps. So, I think as the board, as a board, we need to see if there's consensus to have him return and continue to engage him in helping facilitate select board-town manager relationship as well as, you know, additional goal-setting. And I think, you know, I guess in terms of the Greenwood Center thing, and I'm just going to use this as an example, one of the things, and this applies to all of us equally, it's, you know, the thing about when Mr. Lynch made the comment about being a board and moving forward once a decision has been made, I think that, I just want to throw that out as a reminder, because, you know, I think it's, if there's one small step we can take as a group to improve not only the kind of collective relationships, but also how we operate and serve the community, it would be that one. Because, you know, not every, not every decision goes the way every individual wants it to go, including me. But I think it's important to say, you know, the decision's been made, we need to acknowledge it and move forward as a group. You know, I think you're correct, Richard. I, members of the board have made it clear about their view on Greenwood, and that certainly has factored into my thinking. I've tried to be collaborative on the process, I report on the progress of the regional dispatcher frequently. Obviously, I am acutely aware of the, of the other programs that are in the, that are in that building, and I, you know, I engage with those people that run those programs daily. So, it's not lost on me that other study and work would have to be done. And we, certainly if we got to that point, we would do, we would do that and decide what's the best option for the town, the same thing we do every day. Analyze problems and decide what's the best, what's the best step forward for the, for the community, for the greatest good, for the greatest number. In terms of the Young Mansion, I would say that there's, you know, I wouldn't necessarily call the approach we've taken passive. I would call it more collaborative with the bank. We do know that there are going to be changes occurring very soon, and that, you know, the house, I think in the very near future, will be brought to market, which is something that they have not been able to do because of the situation with the occupants. We expect that a structural engineer that initially inspected the porch last winter will be brought back on-site soon to analyze the structure and see if there's any deficiencies that need to be addressed right away. But the thing, the comment I want to make is that we only know these things because the bank has been in regular communication with us, and that is why we have chosen to, at this time, be collaborative with them, because they, they're, they are kind of caught in a situation as well. I would disagree with the notion that they've been reprehensible or irresponsible. I think their hands have been tied in legal matters, and I know that no one sitting at this table has any legal authority to do anything about it. It's kind of above our pay grade. We have done everything we can do, which is stay in contact, monitor the situation, and make sure that when something does change, we are prepared to move forward, and all those steps I just identified are all indicators that that's exactly what we've been doing. In terms of fines by the Historic District Commission, my approach with them has been, when the bank is now in control of their own destiny with regards to the house and it's not tied up in land court or other proceedings, let's see how they act, and if they don't show immediately that they're, that they want to take an aggressive approach to dealing with the property, then I would also extort, exhort the Historic District Commission to begin assessing fines. We just haven't been in that place. So, it's, I share the same goal as everyone else, which is to get the property into the hands of someone who can responsibly renovate it and make it the gem that it once was and an asset to the community instead of something that is somewhat of a detraction. So, we are, but, like I said, there's limited authorities. We spent a lot of time with town council and others trying to figure out what are the limits of our authority on this, and there really isn't much we can do. So, we have spent a lot of time, I've reported on it frequently to the board, my discussions. So, I, I mean, there, I mean, yes, there haven't apparently been discussions, there have been discussions, I've reported on them to the board, and I, it's important to me. I guess what I'm trying to say is, it's important to me, it's important to the people who work for the town, but the law is the law, and we, there, there's not much we can do. There are, and this is, I think, is informing some of our recommendations for bylaw revisions that will be, again, forthcoming at a, hopefully at a future special time meeting dedicated to bylaws.
Steve?
I'd just like to add, I mean, you did a good job of telling us where things are at, but if there's a point where the community could be of support to you, because you're taking leadership role in this, perhaps you could let Betsy know, and, you know, I think people would gather in the green and sort of hold signs and do the kinds of things that might create some attention that might be needed at a critical point, and so, you know.
Yeah, it came up, it came up at our staff meeting this morning, Tom, it came up, Paul Healy, who's our building commissioner, more than a weekly basis, more than weekly, he talks to the listing, the person who's been the kind of listing agent slash intermediary between the people who've been, the occupants and the bank, and then also some representative of the management company that manages the assets for the bank and foreclosed, the foreclosed assets. And like I said, regular communication, checks in with us, they offer us information, we don't always have to chase them down for answers. But one of the things that the listing agent mentioned was perhaps a place to put a large sign, larger than normal, listing the property for sale, or some kind of creative thing to bring attention to the fact that it is now available, and my position was, sure, whatever we can do, you know? Stretch the limits of what we would normally allow for signage to bring attention to the house and let people know, and be creative. So, I said, like I said, try and be creative, and the things we can do, make sure we're doing them to enhance a positive outcome.
Yeah, because maybe if there was some sort of a gathering, we could attract a buyer who would really say, well, I didn't notice the house, but now that there was something in the, in the newspaper and the media would say, oh, I'd fix that up, you know? It's going to take a lot, though, I know that.
It is. I think one of the, one of the things that a prospective buyer, or even the bank, more likely a prospective buyer, should do is engage the Community Preservation Commission. They do have funds for historic preservation, and that's something that I've, I anticipate that whoever goes to do something with the property will probably go see them and request some funds to help offset the substantial cost of renovating that home. You know, like I said, we've had a lot of offline discussions with some people who are interested. We've tried to bring in a third-party nonprofit agency that kind of helps, helps people, helps whoever would develop that property get tax credits and things like that. There are strings attached when you do that, so we're just trying to make sure that we have pieces in place that when something kind of, when the, when the dominoes start to fall, they're lined up appropriately.
Thank you.
Steven, I mean, you are right. I mean, our authority to make somebody renovate a place or to keep it up is limited, but what is not in dispute is the need for approval when you're changing the exterior of a home in the Historic District. This is what the bank has done. And, you know, and I guess the way I'm looking at this is, you know, at the end of May, the occupants were supposed to be out. We thought that was the end in June, and, you know, and we've been holding our, staying our hand during this whole time, you know, in a way that we don't really stay for anybody else. And, you know, the, I think in order to get the bank to move on this, you're going to have to make it their problem, and by just sort of allowing, you know, this grace, you know, of not enforcing our laws about changing the exterior of homes in the Historic District, I think we're just allowing them to kick it down, kick the can down the road.
I don't have the bylaw in front of me, but I had thought that there was a provision for emergency repairs. And I think the, what you're talking about is the stabilizing members, the large pieces of wood that are stabilizing the portico.
I mean, that's the first I've heard that, that argument.
I, I don't, I'm not.
I've never heard that argument.
I don't know, I haven't, don't have, I don't have the bylaw in front of me, but most, I have a fair amount of experience in historic preservation for previous lives.
I mean, has the bank even made that argument?
I don't know in the argument, I think if it was, they would have. I mean, it wasn't really an alteration, I mean, it was an alteration, but a temporary bracing is really what it is. It's not a permanent alteration. And I think that, I hear what you're saying, and I think if you, you know, there's even limits to what I can really report, because it is a, essentially, at this time, still a private matter in housing court between the bank and some private citizens. And so, I've tried to be somewhat circumspect with my comments to not get the town in the middle of that. And I understand what you're saying, certainly with everything that's happened in the, nationwide with housing and mortgages and malfeasance by financial institutions, I think it's easy to make the banks seem like the bad guy, because there are plenty of, and I'll say, Alex, there are plenty of other situations with foreclosed properties where the banks are just terror, not communicative, don't care. We had a hearing on 44 Tanglewood, the bank is not being responsive and honoring their obligations. In this particular instance, that's not the case, and I think, and I've tried, as I said, I've tried to report on why we be, why we are, to some extent, giving the bank the benefit of the doubt because of housing court, land court, housing court issue, not land court, housing court issues. And it's been made clear to me, just in terms of how often they've kept in touch with us and what they've said, that the bank wants a quick resolution to this every bit as much or more than the town, and it's been out of their hands as well. I promise you, they wanted the occupants out back in May as well.
Right, but they could have done the bracing in a way that complied with the Historic District Commission. They could have made the.
Yeah, again, I think they were complicating legal matters between the occupants and the bank that made that somewhat of a challenge, and it gets into the, as I'm sure you know, in the details of the filings and in the documents that exist between the two parties. So, I mean, I hear what you're saying.
It just sounds like we're the same. I mean, I just don't want it to be.
That's because it's the facts.
I don't want it to be three months later and saying, well, you know, we're still waiting on housing court and we're waiting on the bank.
Right. I think, as you know, I don't control any of those outcomes, and it's more of the same because it's the truth, and I know it's not what you want to hear, but I, all I can tell you is that we have done everything we can to stay on top of this and find, and trust but verify the bank's statements, and, you know, they tell us something, we'll check with town council and verify that the story they're giving us is accurate, and we have done all of that. I don't like it any more than anybody else, but I am only reporting the facts and where we sit today.
You going to move on?
Yes. So, I had a note in there about the Green Communities. There's still some effort kind of internally with some associates of our consultant to try and get the information from the utility company for the calculations that has not been forthcoming. We'll see how that goes. On a separate note, we did receive some information that we discussed in executive session that I did forward to the board, and I don't want to talk too much about that, I'm sure we'll have another executive session to kind of continue that dialogue. Separately, I did meet with the Department of Energy Resources, which is a state office that oversees the Green Communities program, and I did receive assurance that our grant funds are not in jeopardy by this delay, and that they are open to alternate proposals to use those funds. At the same time, they have a utility liaison that works for DOE-R, and we had a somewhat lengthy conversation about the situation we're in with Eversource. I did forward her some documents that I had received from George Woodbury, and the utility liaison was going to run up the proverbial flagpole to see if the state could apply some pressure to move the needle on this. I also went to, attended an MMA legislative breakfast last week, and I did put this on the MMA's radar screen as something. And I did put this on the MMA's radar screen as something that affects probably a lot of communities and they don't know it yet. And, uh, I did get some, uh, some positive feedback about continuing that dialogue at the state level. Uh, there have been some staff changes, just as an FYI, uh, Paul Seaford, our veterans' agent, uh, has, is leaving us to get a, um, to have a, a similar, um, job in the city of Springfield. Uh, I think it's, uh, more hours, quite honestly, better pay, uh, and doing something a little different than he's doing now. But, um, it's a nice, uh, advancement for him, and even though we're disappointed he's leaving, it's, I'm happy for him personally. I think Paul's a, anyone who's dealt with him, and he knows he's a, just a, a nice person and solid, so he'll be missed. Uh, we did hire an assistant town accountant, Jason Ducharme was promoted to town accountant, so his position was filled, um, by a gentleman by the name of Chris Caputo, who comes for us from the city of Springfield, so we just keep trading horses back and forth with the city of Springfield. Um, you know, they take one of ours, we'll take two of theirs, one of those things. Um, and, uh, and the other thing is, we've been, we advertised the town engineer position in the paper, we went to APWA, we've been, and just have not really received any interest in the position somewhat amazingly, so, um, the position remains vacant. That does have an impact on, um, not so much operations right now, 'cause construction's winding down, but the engineer is intimately involved in the capital planning process, and that's been with two people, with a director and an assistant director, neither of whom have ever been through capital planning. Um, it's, it's hamstrung our planning abilities, so we're trying to work hard to get through all of that. Uh, and we are exploring, um, different ways to really just fill the position even on an interim basis. Uh, and one more staff change is not in the packet. Uh, Rebecca, this is Rebecca's last meeting, she gave her notice and I'd like to thank her for her patience and service, uh, as our recording secretary. Uh, I believe Debbie House is going to be filling in, in the interim going forward. Um, I know a lot of people are interested in the tennis courts, the Blinn Courts, and, um, I don't know if you've been by, they just, they look awesome. I mean, they just look so good, and the, the stripe, the, the lines are down, they're painted blue and green, the fencing's all black, they, the coaches walks in. Our guys are doing some of the kind of finishing, touch-up landscaping work around the back, and, um, it's just gonna be spectacular, we are going to, um, um, someone has proposed, uh, uh, um, Dr. Elfman has proposed a donation to install a bubbler that would help the high school team, a drinking fountain. Um, um, that, M, under M I A I A, uh, rules, or no, M I A A. The school athletics rules, you have to have water service, and right now, the athletic department puts it on golf carts and brings it down in giant coolers. So they, so the water cooler there would be beneficial, so that's something that we're looking to in the shed. Um, right now, uh, the parking lot needs to be milled and, and repaved because they, I don't know if you remember, the courts used to have a jog in them. Um, they lined up all the courts, so it's one straight line all the way down. And that, of course, created a, a gap in where the parking la, area used to be, so they have to mill and re, excuse me, mill and overlay that. And, um, that'll be done, I think, in the next couple of weeks, but that'll delay the opening. Um, so we're looking most likely at a springtime opening and, and rededication of those. Uh, the clay tennis courts for those who still wanna play, uh, the clay tennis courts will remain open till, I believe, the twenty-fifth of October. Uh, we checked with the Parks and Rec Department to make sure, I believe it's October twenty-fifth. And of course, the Greenwood Center Courts are also open. Um, I think that's about it for me.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments for, uh?
Yeah, I just have a question about one of the monthly, one of the reports, Stephen. And it's not so much for you, I guess, it's, it's for us. There was a report from the police, uh, the police department, um, monthly report about IT issues. And I was just wondering, I thought, did we talk about getting IT in here to talk to them? I think if there's a IT issues impacting the police department, you know, with the relationship we have with the IT, I think we need to resolve that, and I don't know at what level that gets taken place.
It wasn't, it's not at that level. Uh, it was a, um, we did work it out. It was a connectivity issue, uh, looking at, we're demoing a new antenna.
Oh, 'cause they were talking about big, big money for each car, it was a, okay.
Uh, like a thousand bucks.
No, 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 that, that's different from the, than the antenna, I mean.
No, but I think the fit, they found a fix that was, I mean, a thousand bucks, a thousand bucks, but they, we're, we're demoing one on a, on a cruiser to see if it works, and if it does work better than we may, either through capital or some other, uh, vehicle or some other means, um, funded for the remainder of the cars.
Any other statements? Okay, uh, we got some minutes for approval.
I'll move we approve the minutes of the September, uh, regional select board meeting.
September tenth, two thousand fifteen.
Two thousand fifteen regional select board meeting.
Second.
I'll second it.
Okay, any discussion? Alex?
You know, uh, Mark, uh, I, I commend you as usual for taking detailed notes, um, when I do not. Uh, but I, I, the format of them, that, it's a little rough. And, 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 uh, I mean, it's like.
More than a little rough, Alex. Well, I just took the notes and I, I, 'cause I got busy, I literally.
Right.
It went from me to Richard to, to Debbie, who just typed the notes as they were. I mean, if you wanna pass on it, I'll try to type them up into the.
From his handwritten notes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I.
Type them up more, it's fun.
I mean, I, I will, I, I'll take it upon myself to, to, to try to make this a little more narrative and form and.
Okay, then we'll withdraw.
Can we put it off?
Yeah, withdraw the motion.
I'll do that work.
Yeah, I'll withdraw that motion.
Okay, motion for the, uh, October fifth?
I'm, I'll move to approve the minutes of the October fifth select board with a couple of corrections or changes. I don't know if you, you wanna do them now, but.
Yeah, they're very simple, aren't they?
Yeah, there's just a couple of them, one under comments was, it says that, uh, in, instead of just saying, we need to find a way to post information, it was information distributed in advance to pass meetings. I thought that was more clarified instead of just information.
What we'll likely do, he's reading, he's just got a couple, he'll read them and we'll approve them and just he'll send them electronic.
Then I'll send it to you. Uh, in, in a comment about the adult center, it was, Mr. Crane noted that tear down was probably very costly. I was gonna say tear down costs were probably very large, but I don't need to make that change. Just, uh, and, and finally, a comment about the DPW's task force recommendation. I, I'd suggest that we change Wolf Swamp to two words and put in Wolf Swamp Road, uh, as a preferred site, as opposed to just Wolf Swamp as the site.
Just put it right in the wetlands.
We'll put it right in the wetlands.
Floating.
So that was, what, the street, so?
I'll, I'll send that to, to you.
Have a second on the motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, any more discussion? So we'll approve the minutes as, uh, written or as, as corrected and, uh, send them to the clerk. All in favor? Okay. And the other ones, Alex is going to take a peek at and we'll get them back on the thing next time. Okay, uh, one-day liquor license approval.
Move we approve a one-day liquor license for the Long Meadow Cultural Commission to, as, as, as requested under the, with the approval stipulations of the, uh, police department.
Have a second?
Second.
We really don't need a discussion unless you want.
You can argue against it, but.
But I, I just, uh, would only add that I hope everyone can come. It was a fun time last year, we raised an additional fourteen hundred and thirty-one dollars to go into this year's budget to help bring more cultural activities and programs to the town.
I don't think any of the board members have a discussion? No?
So.
Sounds good.
I look forward to seeing everyone there.
Thank you.
And we would look forward to seeing you there, too.
And my pals at L C T V.
Okay, all in favor?
Thank you.
Hope you have a nice event.
I move we approve a requested temporary street closure for, uh, Center School to, uh, I think.
It's for Alex. Yeah, Alex submitted this one, it's for, um.
For Halloween, subject to the conditions, uh, approved by the police department.
Okay, any desire?
Well, I, actually.
You shouldn't even vote.
I was going to abstain of this.
I wanna know, did you do the diagrams?
No, I, they would've been worse, uh, had I done it.
'Cause of the red house, I got the look, and okay, second this?
I'll second the motion, yes.
Uh, Alex, you need to say anything about it?
No, I, the, uh, the only thing I can tell you, the, the, I guess the main thing I should tell you is that we're doing exactly what's been done in the past. It, it's the same race, it's the Halloween hustle. The police have, uh, approved the road race course, um, that, that goes on the roads that aren't being closed. This just has to do with, uh, closing off a section of Long Meadow Street in front of the school on a Saturday morning.
Okay, and it looks like the chief of police has signed off and deep Debbie's getting, you pick up the barricades and everything, so it looks like everybody's in agreement. Any other discussion by the board? All in favor? Okay.
And I'm, I'm gonna abstain of that.
Okay, moderator.
By the way, for the record, we, we had on the agenda tonight briefing on the high school closeout. Uh, we have postponed that, it'll likely take place in another couple of months. The, the figures are still being worked out, and when they are finally worked out, we'll bring Bobby Barquette and, uh, Peter in, Peter Greenberg in to meet with the board and be able to talk, uh, on camera with the public and let them know how the project closed down and why there's an additional amount of money being placed. And it's, it's in the range of four hundred and fifty to five hundred thousand, and it's, it, that figure's been known for quite some time, so there's no surprises, so. Okay, Ms. Moderator.
How are you doing tonight?
Good, how are you?
Good. It's a wonderful evening.
Rebecca Townsend, one e, one sixty Ely Road, for the record.
And?
This is my first time before the select board as moderator, so I, uh, welcome your guidance on how to proceed. I have looked at the warrant, and if you'd like to proceed by going through it bit by bit and just discussing with me where you see issues or potential issues, we can do it that way, and then I can give you a general overview of, uh, what I aim to do, or we can do it in the reverse.
Well, many of them seem like they're pretty straightforward this time, there's.
Well, I, I want to verify that with you, with you all, um.
We're gonna talk.
No, no, but, but I was just saying, they all seem straightforward all the time, and yet something comes up at the town meeting that.
Exactly.
Something's not straightforward.
Okay.
Exactly.
Well, start on Article One.
It looks like it's a reimbursement, uh, simple majority required. Uh, any controversy on that? And I'll be asking, if there's any, any anticipated issues or, I see it's recommended by the finance committee. Article Two is, uh, raise an appropriate fifty thousand dollars for debt service, retirement of short-term debt. That's also, uh, recommended by the finance committee.
The only thing that may come up, Rebecca, is that, that is, our CFO had mentioned, that's a, I don't know if the right phrase to use, but it's, it's an optional, I mean, we don't need this to balance the budget, but it does help us accelerate the, the retirement of debt, and so somebody may stand up and question it, but I hope not.
Okay.
So, Ed, follow up on what Mark just said. So there's a bunch of raise and appropriates?
Yep.
Um, and so what we're doing is we're increas, we're going up to a new levy limit. It, the levy limit that we thought we had in the spring was lower than it is potentially. So that is sort of what Mark's alluding to, this is a discretionary point. If we wanted to balance the budget using free cash, we could've done so. But what this warrant proposes is, uh, raising additional tax, uh, funds to do that.
But these are all within the property to, proposition two and a half?
Yes.
Limit?
Yes.
Okay, just verifying that.
But there's a policy question which was debated quite a bit on this board about whether that ought to happen.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Uh, uh, the, the board thought it appropriate, but.
Okay.
But I could see town meeting members th, thinking of wanting to, uh, take up the argument that Mark raised before this board, which would be to do it through free cash otherwise.
Okay, so the, um, select, so I'm assuming, because these are on the warrant, select board has approved these, finance committee has approved them. Uh, Article Three is the employee benefits liability insurance, twenty-five thousand. Um, Article Four is also raise and appropriate thirty thousand for liability insurance. Fairly straightforward, simple majority required.
Liability's go up, insurance is go up.
Article Five also looks like an administrative, uh, item to raise and appropriate fifty thousand or, or greater or lesser sum for employee retire, employee retiree benefits, employee health insurance. No discussion on that.
I, I just wanna make one statement about, um, Articles One through Five, where they're raising appropriate from the general fund. Um, the total of all these fell short of, of where we were with, uh, with the full tax levy, so we are under the tax levy. We're gonna be under by, we could've raised an additional two cents, it's not a lot of money, but just FYI for your information, it's about thirty-nine thousand dollars. Um, that's gonna be left on the table, so just, you know, just wanna make sure everybody's aware of that.
Thank you. Article Six looks like the housekeeping article for the Community Preservation Fund, putting the money where it belongs in each particular account. And Article Seven is, um.
Look, if I could just.
Yep.
I mean, it, it's also sort of reaffirming our commitment to CPA projects. And again, town meeting members have in the past, you know, raised questions of whether we should even be doing CPA, you know. So, um, so it, so, uh, you know, that, that issue could come up.
So it's fulfilling our obligation to, since we do have it, we're fulfilling our obligation by putting the money where it belongs.
Right, well, and it's, we're also raising the money, though.
Yes.
So, it, like, if, so in other words, if we decide we didn't wanna do community preservation, uh, projects and not get money from the state, we wouldn't have to raise that money.
Thank you.
So.
Article Seven, um, to see if the vote to transfer from the ambulance fund, sum of nine thousand dollars or a greater or lesser sum to the finance committee-controlled reserve fund, and that looks like it's a reimbursement as well.
Yeah.
Correct, okay. So one through seven are somewhat straightforward, somewhat. Uh, Article Eight is the, um, transfer from available funds in the treasury for hundred thirty-eight thousand, three hundred dollars or a greater or lesser sum for the purpose of continuing the architect, engineering, design work for a new Department of Public Works complex and to retain an owner's project manager, O P M pursuant to the Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter One Forty-Nine, Section Forty-Four A and a half, or to take any other action relative thereto. I'm, as I understand it, there's going to be, or there may be, somebody, uh, who is a non-town meeting member or voter present to talk, or is that not the case?
They will, Western Sampson is our A and E firm for this, and they will be in attendance. Uh, I don't, we're still, we're still discussing internally whether or not it's best to either myself make a presentation on the article or have one of them make an art presentation. Um, they may be invited to answer questions or speak, but I would, I would say minimally, they will be request, they will request permission from the moderator to, uh, answer questions at a minimum.
And ju, just to address that, um, since it is our tradition in town meeting to allow those with specialized knowledge or expertise in an area, if they are not a voter, to speak, then we allow that. And so I, I would be continuing that tradition, obviously, it's important to have those who have specialized knowledge have a chance to speak on an item that is relevant to their knowledge. Are there any other aspects of Article Eight that you need me to be aware of?
There, there may be PowerPoint.
There may be PowerPoint, okay. Uh, with, with regard to PowerPoint, I encourage, uh, the presentations to be, uh, completed as early as possible so that they can be uploaded to the schools' computers, and this goes for any PowerPoint that anyone wishes to make.
So like six forty-five?
The previous day, sure. So as early as possible.
Billy noted.
Thank you. And any presentations, obviously, should be brief.
Yes.
Thank you. Article Nine.
Forty minutes.
Not forty minutes. To see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds in the treasury that, in the treasury, in the treasure, is that accurate?
No, that, that's typo, that's very fixed.
Thank you, okay, this is a, a draft version I have. Um, fifty thousand dollars for tasks, including but not limited to additional site analysis, conceptual site plan, and conceptual building. Fifty thousand dollars for tasks, including but not limited to additional site analysis, conceptual site plan, and conceptual building renderings for the development of a new or renovated senior center, or take any other action relative thereto. And again, that's the same situation with regard to non-voters speaking, if there's any non-voters we anticipate hearing from, it's important to have them...
I haven't discussed it with Deeds, they probably will be there as well to answer questions about the work they've done so far. I mean, we can look at the report, but I think having the architect and engineer that performed the work on the reports that are going to guide decision-making by town meeting, I think they plan to be there.
Rebecca, I would think you might expect people to speak, public to speak on either side of this, or perhaps certainly in favor of it, as opposed to some of the early articles that may not develop any speakers one way or the other.
I was at the lunch at the senior center last Friday and heard a lot of discussion about it, and there were people who mentioned that they would be speaking, so I anticipate that as well, thanks for the heads up, too.
And the plans from the architect are, they're online, right, so residents can have access to those before the meeting?
I believe we uploaded it to the website, I haven't...
I haven't checked.
I haven't checked.
Which, I mean, because our packet documents, that, those are still in the limbo, so if that's what you're talking about.
No, the report itself, I had asked, I had asked that the report be uploaded to the website itself, and I think, as I've mentioned before, that stuff has to be kind of approved by Civics, not by Civics Plus, but approved by the IT department before it can be uploaded, whereas before, departments could just do their own thing. That's part of the trade-off with going to Civics Plus, so there is sometimes a lag, and I have not checked to see if it's on there.
I guess the question, Stephen, is where on, I mean, do we have like a town meeting?
No, there's the documents page.
So, residents could look at this, I mean, their goal is to have it on there prior to the town meeting for people to review.
I would think that if we're gonna, we ought to put the warrant on the website, if it's not already there, once we got it finalized.
Yes.
And then put that same document in the same place as the warrant, Stephen.
Yeah, that is it. I mean, it would be nice if it was a prominent place, you know, like, you know, somebody goes on, so you don't have to hunt for it.
Well, the warrant's generally on the front of the website.
Yeah.
I don't even think, well, the warrant's not there yet, because we...
No, we haven't proved it.
Right.
Oh, it's on the COA page. Thank you.
This study is? Okay.
So, the warrant will be on the website, is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, but for the Council of Aging, this, these forms for this article will be, are on the website.
Yeah, the study.
Under the Council of Aging.
Thank you. Article Ten is to see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds in the treasury, fifty-three thousand, seventy-four dollars or a greater or lesser sum to the operating stabilization fund, or take any other action relative thereto.
That's the balance of free cash going, that should be routine, and when it's read, it won't be, say, a greater or lesser sum.
Thank you.
I assume, Paul, that's going to be the final number, if it changes, you'll change it.
We have our free cash certified, so this brings it right to the five hundred thousand dollar limit. Yeah, I think I'd like to state, though, instead of the word operating, it should be operational. A greater or lesser sum to the operational stabilization fund.
I almost tripped over it for that reason.
Yeah.
And that requires a two-thirds majority.
On Number Ten, it's listed as operating stabilization fund, it should be operational.
And just as a note for anybody who's listening as well, as you mentioned, that number will be finalized in the motion, the oral motion that is said at town meeting. There has been confusion in the past over what the distinction is between the warrant article and the motion. The motion that is made at town meeting is what we are voting on. The warrant gives people a general warning of the topics and the relative scope of the item that we're going to be voting on. And so, just to clarify for anyone who's listening, it's the motion article, the motion that is made that we're voting on, not the specific warrant. So, if somebody hears a difference in the number that is presented, then I'll explain that as well on town meeting floor. Let's see, Article Eleven, to see if the town will vote to amend the demolition delay bylaw definition of commission under Article One to, and I won't be reading this right now. I imagine one of you will, or somebody else will, or we can dispense with the reading and go with, I move it as presented in the warrant.
This, you may recall, this is the one that engendered all sorts of debate, which, you know, I was stunned by, so I guess it kind of proved Mark's point, is it's hard to predict sometimes.
Yes.
I'm told that this is the compromise language that was discussed with the demolition delay committee. I sent out a slight revision to the one she has to the board, and allegedly, that is going to mollify the concerns of those who were in opposition to the previously proposed language.
See, the thing that amazed me was, as far as I know, this committee's never met.
They've never met.
Again, you never can tell. And Article Twelve is on complete streets, the draft that I have does not have the language in it.
It's in the, it's in the one that went out later today, and the one thing, actually, as, I don't know if you saw the email...
I addressed that, if you want to discuss, do we want to discuss that now?
Yeah.
Okay. So, the complete, so David Martel just had a suggestion that we put the section numbers in, and he had a suggestion about which section numbers ought to be assigned, and that's what I did. So, I can send Stephen the new draft with the section numbers in it, and I've got a printout that I can pass around.
That's why we can make the change, the signature sheet's there, and these are really signed, and so we can post it tomorrow morning and make sure that we have it. If you could send that to Debbie, actually, and Paul, which I made.
Rebecca, would you like to, this is another...
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Now, the intro should say something like, to see if the town will, will adopt, it would be section, was it forty or whatever?
Four dash six oh one.
Yeah.
Through six oh seven.
Yeah, well, to see if the town will adopt those sections and the general bylaws, which should be how that gets introduced in the motions, I would think, based on what I heard from Dave.
Here's the problem, is, is, is this going to be in the distributed warrant?
Yes.
Okay, so this will, so...
Well, that's, you, the latest draft of the warrant has that text in there.
Okay.
The only difference is the section numbers. See, before...
But, but we couldn't vote to adopt it as printed in the warrant because it doesn't have the section.
You will, you will, because tomorrow, when the warrant gets posted, it'll have...
That was my question, so we can...
So, long as he gets them to us, we can...
All right, and it's right here, I'll send it to you right now, Stephen, but I didn't even read David's opinion to say that it couldn't, that the section numbers were absolutely required, but it was sort of like a nice thing to do. So, I went ahead and did it.
Yeah, it's...
Okay.
I hope we're going to dispense with the reading of that entire thing.
That would be my preference. And one of the other things that we can do, as you know, the town meeting will be in the auditorium, the new auditorium for the first time, and one of the things that this allows for is much greater ease in seeing any PowerPoint slides. And so, what we could do is have any of the articles, especially this one, posted on slides so that people can read them as well, if the board would like to do that.
Now, what's the capacity of the auditorium?
It's six hundred sixty-seven seats, and with the capacity potentially of another sixty to eighty seats, Principal Anders had estimated eighty to ninety in my discussions with the fire chief and Captain McSada. They're going to be talking with him about making sure there's a clear egress for people in case of an emergency. And so, the exact number of extra seats that can be brought in is still unknown, but the basic capacity is six sixty-seven.
I think there's also a capacity for overflow of a couple hundred in the cafeteria that has, you know, they have TVs installed in the cafeteria that play, you know, messages to students, and my understanding is that those can be used as monitors for town meeting. I think the only thing I'd say is, you know, the auditorium has much longer row widths than the gymnasium setup, so if people go in and tend to speak, try and find a seat close to the aisle.
Yep.
And how we will normally split these up is we divide them amongst the members, so each of us will have two, and a couple of us will have three to read.
One idea that the Rules Committee likes, and I think town meeting voters may appreciate as well, in the interests of getting out at a decent time, is to do something slightly different. To do something that is done in many other towns, Lexington, Wellesley, Concord, Wilbraham, Hadley, Arlington, a number of different towns in Massachusetts put items that are relatively non-controversial. So, we kind of established that Articles One through Seven were somewhat straightforward, they're all recommended by the finance committee, to put them on what's called a consent agenda and allow for the presentation of the names of all of the articles, and then taking them as a block. If a voter wants to take an item, excuse me, take an article up separately, they would yell out, "Hold," and I would explain this procedure to voters. So, it might go something like this, a voter could say, "I move that the town take Articles One, Two, Three, Four, Five, Six, and Seven out of order and that they be passed by consent in accordance with the articles presented." The articles would be considered as a group, if, I would then repeat the titles of the articles. If a voter wants to take, say, Article Four out, and it's a random number, I would get to Article Four, they would say, "Hold," that would be taken out of the consent agenda, and it would be One, Two, Three, Five, Six, Seven, that would be part of a consent agenda. When discussion opens up, discussion could be about any of the articles that are in the consent agenda, and then we would vote on them as a block. And what that would do is reduce the need for separate motions, separate presentations for every single article. It would still allow for discussion, and it would still allow for taking a specific article out of that consent agenda to vote on it separately. So, if somebody wanted to vote all of them up except for number five, they would request that five be taken out, and then vote on that separately. Who would do the holding? Anybody, any citizen who wants to hold it.
Okay. I guess worst-case scenario, you could get six of them stand up and say they want to withdraw a different one.
And that's fine, and that's what we've done in the past, so it's no different than what we've done in the past.
Okay. What's going to be the procedure for the introduction of these then to the voters?
Well, a voter, whether it's somebody on the select board or someone else, would make that motion, and I'm clarifying the language with town council to make sure that it's legal, but this is what I've heard from other moderators and what's printed in other towns, town meeting procedures. "I move that the town take Articles, list all of them, out of order and that they be passed by consent in accordance with the articles presented," so as they're written. Sure.
Rebecca, I seem to have recalled that, and I may not be perfectly right on this, but if you do, if we do follow Robert's rules, a consent agenda is just that and cannot have discussion. And so, that if you take Articles One, Two, Three, Six, and Eight out of order and approved by consent, there can be no discussion on those articles or the, or the motion, it's a consent agenda, if that's, if I'm correct. And so, you know, to say we discuss them as a whole, you don't, you can't discuss them, you either vote them up or vote them down, or they are not on the consent agenda, isn't that the way it's done?
In town meeting time, which guides town meetings, not Robert's Rules of Order, it's a variation on it, it allows for some flexibility in that. I've seen some towns that do allow for discussion, some towns don't. Most towns don't for, to keep it in...
Well, the other thing is, you're going to get somebody talking about Five, and somebody else talking about Two, and somebody else talking about...
True.
Three, and if you're not following it closely, it could be confusing, you know?
Well, we...
Let's try something different, but all I'm saying is, for ones that we found in town meeting, as fast as you read them, you vote them, you're done, it's, they've gone pretty quickly, the ones that actually have no controversy about them.
I mean, when I speak with Mr. Martel, I can ask him about whether or not discussion would be permitted in his view.
Okay.
And I would take the legal opinion on that.
Yeah, because Mark's point is right, normally consent agenda has no discussion, but that's why we do consent agenda, it saves time.
I mean, I'm more concerned that if you're considering multiple articles under the same motion, you know...
And that's fair.
Especially if some are raise and appropriate, and some are from free cash, as they are, you know, I don't know, we'll see what happens, obviously.
We'd have a ten-minute meeting.
Well, you're excluding the senior center and the DPW.
Okay, twelve minutes.
Or not, I mean, or somebody stands up and says, "Hold" at each one, just...
Right, and that's, and that's fine.
What's wrong with a ten-minute meeting?
Nothing. You're going to get the language to us, then?
Yes.
Okay.
And I will get the final say on whether or not there's discussion permitted. But it seems, I mean, what I'm hearing from you is that it's preferable, if we're going to have a consent agenda, that there be no discussion component.
Well, no, I don't...
Oh, I heard from Mark, forgive me.
My comment was, if you have discussion, it might tend to be confusing over multiple articles, that's all I'm thinking. As opposed to if you have a consent agenda, and there is no discussion, you're not going to be confused, you're either going to vote for them or against them, but that's my opinion.
I mean, to me, you know, this is sort of their time to participate in the democratic process, you know, and just, you know, on some of these articles that we just talked about, we had a rather robust discussion on the select board about whether we're supposed to raise and appropriate, getting into, you know, our long-term effect on our tax rate. I mean, these are all very kind of meaty issues, even though the amounts of money are not huge on any particular one. So, I mean, my preference, to the extent it would be, is to allow discussion on it. I can see how maybe taking One through Five together, there is some commonality, because those are the raise and appropriate ones. But, you know, Mark's point is also correct, you know, maybe somebody is fine with twenty-five thousand dollars for, you know, unexpected unemployment costs, but not as big on retiring short-term debt, you know? One other thing I was going to mention, Rebecca, on Article Twelve...
Yes.
This has been sort of a project of Marie Angelides and me, and we haven't quite gotten together, but we're planning to do some sort of presentation. I don't know if it would necessarily involve PowerPoint, but I promise it would be short, probably shorter than the other two. But I think it is something that may gather questions. I don't think we've done something like this before, it's a kind of a planning bylaw. I know that, you know, probably in previous years, it might not have gotten unanimous support on the select board, you know, some people aren't as big in the bike lanes as others, you know, and, and, you know, so I guess I'm just kind of flagging this. This could be a topic of, you know, to me, this is a far more substantive issue than the composition of the demolition, you know, committee.
Oh, it's completely different, yes.
You know, and I think we spent forty-five minutes on that one last year, so...
Now, Rebecca, if someone was to make a motion to pull, you know, several warrant articles together, would they have to do it in writing, as you're requesting, is that...
Amendments are usually in writing, and certainly, all of the motions that we make are in writing.
Okay, all right, so if they were, so they wouldn't have to write down, they want to take Articles One through Five as one group, they wouldn't have to write that down?
No.
They would just throw that out?
Yes.
And then, but there are, if people come to the floor with a motion, you said you want to have it in writing, is this in your guidelines that you sent us?
Yeah, we've always...
Any amendments, yes, are in writing.
Yeah, and I was just, you know, I don't know, the setup, I don't know if you're familiar with like Elmo, there's this, there's this thing, and so if you had a written, if someone handed you a written motion, you could put it under this thing, and it would project up on a screen, you know if they're going to have that at the...
That's a good question, I can look into it.
Because that might be handy. 'Cause that might be handy for people to be able to see right away. It's just like a
Yep.
a new overhead projector, that you don't have to have it on a film.
We drafted certain motions that cover the articles approved by you all. We can certainly have on slides
Great.
on screen because we generate them ourselves.
Right.
Uh, motions offered by others on the floor of town meeting or amendments offered by others, we may not have that capacity.
Let's see, that's where the Elmo. See, we use this, we use this in court all the time. It's, it's a very handy thing because you could put a pen down, it projects,
Just projects with
you don't have to, you don't have to upload a program. You just put a piece of paper underneath there and it, and it's like you put a PowerPoint.
And I'm sure they have them in school, probably every classroom probably has an Elmo.
I wonder if the, there was a, I think, is that, is that one right over there at the back of the room?
Yes, that white thing, yes, that vertical white thing is Elmo, yes.
Yeah.
So that's all you need, that, yeah.
I can look into that, I'll be having a meeting with the counters, which I'll, I'll get to in a moment as well.
Yeah, we may not need it, but it could make it easier for you if there is a motion that people wanna look at.
Thank you.
Rebecca, just further to our comment about consolidating motions.
Sure.
For the, for the annual town meeting, I've been a big proponent and for the community preservation, who generally has multiple warrant articles
Yes.
to at least lump them by category, so if they're coming from, I don't even remember their categories, but, you know, coming, if, if, if they're funding it from, you know, community preservation, that, that they lump all those together if they're coming from another source. And there's four or five sources, it, it's just, and so there may not be applications for this, but certainly there are in things like the Springtown meeting where it's all coming from the same source. For community preservation, generally not much
And certainly the Springtown meeting will have far more articles, I imagine, than thirteen.
Committee alone will be one of the twelve. Their past history is any
But my thinking is if we can try it out on a smaller basis in, in fall town meeting, we'll get the kinks worked out before
Springtime, you have the Gold Wraith and the vending machines for the high school, and you have a bunch of ones that we could
That could be
Yeah.
That could be consolidated in consent agenda.
Rebecca, Mr. Calick had a policy, and I say that not because he said he had a policy, I, I just infer from what he did that he had a policy about when people could move things up in the discussion. So this was often, you know, let's say it's the fluoride. We don't have the article, the fluoride article this year, but it's number twenty. People wanna vote on it first thing because that's what they're all about. Do you have a view on that of taking things out of order? I remember last fall, there were a lot of people that wanted to have the fire truck to be up front. He, he wouldn't allow that. And, I don't know, do you have a policy on it? And, and if, if there is a policy of taking things out of order, what would be the criteria for taking them out of order?
Good question. My general preference is to avoid tinkering with the agenda as set by the Select Board. They have put the agenda out to the voters. The voters expect that this is, that this is the order in which Articles will be presented. And so there may be some voters who, for various reasons, cannot come early, but they can come late.
Right.
Let's say. And so if there's something that they really care about, they'll attend to that late one. If there is some sort of emergency need, and it's hard for me to determine what that emergency need might be. But if there is some emergency need or perhaps, I don't wanna speculate too much
Right, right, but, but it sounds like the presumption would be to keep them
To keep the order as presented.
Sort of what Mr. Calick was, what appeared to be doing to me.
Yeah, it's a common procedure and, and preference and deference that moderators throughout the Commonwealth have is to just keep with the order as presented unless there's some extreme need to, to change the order.
Right.
Would it need a three-quarters of the voters to move it to a different position? I mean
Ooh, you're quizzing me.
Well
That's a good one.
The thing that I remember is Mr. Calick just wouldn't hear the motion.
No, I think it's
He wouldn't hear the motion.
No, he wouldn't, he wouldn't
He just flat out wouldn't allow it.
Yeah, well, I know they've moved some forward.
To advance an article, it requires a second, it is debatable, it is amendable, it's just a simple majority.
Simple majority, okay, thank you.
So what would you, so if somebody wanted to do that, would that, I mean
I, I, for, especially for the first meeting, I would say no. I would wanna keep the order as presented.
All right. So, so you would sort of follow what Mr. Calick was doing?
Yes. And I, you know, one of the things that I'm, I'm willing to do is try some new things.
Right.
I want to attend the Massachusetts Moderators Association meeting, which has its meeting on November sixth, just three days after my first appearance. So the training session for new moderators, I will be not so new anymore, at on, on the sixth. I'll wanna talk with them and, and learn a little bit more about the job before I, I make more changes like that.
Okay.
And certainly, you know, the Rules Committee and I have discussed planning for future town meetings. How can we improve things? Get a sense of what voters want, rather than just assuming we know what they want in terms of how the, the meeting should proceed. It's, it's a tricky business. So the, you know, in terms of general rules of procedure, I mail, emailed everyone, all board members, a copy of the rules of procedure. They're in the warrant as well. The setup of the auditorium will be roughly analogous to the setup in the cafeteria in that the moderator and the clerk and town council will be up on a stage, up on the stage. And there will be tables for the Select Board, School Committee, and Finance Committee, town manager, CFO. The boards and commissions who have some relevance to Articles under consideration will be right up front as well. Visitors will be off to one section. And their section will be clearly marked. The, also my preference, again, falling in line with the, the non-voters being able to speak. Any department head speak, who is called upon to speak, and if that department head is not a town resident or town voter, my preference is to let them speak on an issue that is relevant to their department. The, there will be two microphones in the aisles for citizens to use, and they'll be halfway up the aisle. There'll be a board microphone for a majority board positions. If anybody would like to speak as a citizen, they can go to one of the two citizen microphones. The counters will be doing a different procedure this year. They will be having, we will have two counters per section. And one will verify the other. If there is a discrepancy in a row of count, they will stop immediately, recount that row to make sure that everything is accurate. So yes, it does mean more counters. But it will also mean greater accuracy. And I encourage anyone who would like to be a counter and, especially somebody who is not advocating for a particular warrant article, to see the town clerk and, and share his or her name with, with her. And, and I will get back to them.
Rebecca, on that, Mark had described a procedure, I think it, I, I haven't seen it in my time here, but he said that at some point, that there was sort of a stand-up procedure. You'd stand up and then
People used to stand up.
Once you'd been counted, you'd sit down. That struck me as something that might be helpful to sort of verify, 'cause people are always kind of wondering, geez, did, did the person really get me or not? I don't know, have, have you thought about something like that?
The advantage is, yes, you know, when, when you sit down, you're, you're ready. The disadvantage is, for those people who have difficulty standing, it places a great burden upon them, especially there's many standing counts, as they would be called. And so with this new procedure, cards would be raised and they will only, the counters will tell them, you may only lower them when we say you may lower them. Once we have count, once we have counted, you know, if I say we have five in this row and you say we have four, please raise, keep your cards raised, we'll count again. Five, five, okay. And then we proceed on. And so you may, you may put your cards down. So they will, people will be directed to put their cards down, instead of just being clicked by. So if the, the other regular procedures will be used, we'll have police officers present, the fire personnel will be present. And I look forward to a a very orderly, civic-minded meeting.
As do we.
Well, we've spent hours debating this warrant here prior to it, so we've already, hopefully we've already talked ourselves out and agree on the warrant.
Thank you very much. If there's no further questions, then
Thank you for coming in.
All right, thank you very much.
We'll see you at the meeting.
Yes.
We'll see ya.
So, see, I guess, sign special town meeting warrant, Stephen.
Are you signed?
Yeah, done.
That's tied? Did we, did we vote to approve the special town?
No, not yet, we haven't. Taking intermission here for Okay, I guess we had to, we need a motion to approve the warrant, Dan.
You already closed it?
We have to approve it.
Oh, is it approved?
Oh, okay. Yeah.
I move we approve the warrant as, as distributed and revised, particularly Articles eleven and twelve tonight.
Second? Okay, two seconds, well, that's good. Any, any further?
I'll give you the honor, I'll give you, you give me the second.
Pardon? You can flip a coin on which one hit it. Any further discussion on the, the warrant? Okay, all in favor? We don't have any subcommittee reports. Looks like we're looking at adjournment. Take a motion to adjourn? Do you have something?
No, no, I haven't.
Just, it's before nine o'clock. What are we doing?
I, I move for adjourn.
Okay.
I'll second that.
I can, we have a motion and a second, all in favor? Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, we will see you in two weeks. Have a nice evening.